On our Tuesday, April 14th, School Committee meeting. First up on our agenda for today are the approval of minutes from March 25th, 2020. Motion to approve the minutes, motion by Mr. Dolan.
Sorry, Susan, do we want to wait and just give Judy a minute to let everybody in?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just before we start doing things. It looks like she's letting people in now.
All right, Susan, we have approximately We have approximately thirteen members of the audience who will remain on mute until a public comment.
Okay, so we ready to go?
We are recording.
All right, very good. So we are returning from our executive session with nothing to report at this time. And we will continue on our regular session of our Tuesday, April 14th, School Committee meeting. And first up will be the approval of minutes from March 25th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Mr. Dolan, second is by Mr. Gelfi. Roll call, please.
Aye, roll call, Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Gelfi?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Can't hear you, Judy.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mr. Florence?
Aye.
And Dr. Prewindowski?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to our correspondence and recognition, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope everyone can hear me okay. I just wanted to take this opportunity in light of the unprecedented times that we currently are in in public education, just to really recognize the folks within our BR community that have helped us in moving our remote learning forward, as well as a lot of different initiatives that we've put into place. First and foremost, you know, we have, from the beginning, stated that our primary focus right now has to be on the health and wellness of our stakeholders, those being our students, families, and staff members. With that, it's been kind of a balancing act in terms of, you know, making sure that we are providing service to our students while at the same time trying to protect our staff members at the same time. One program right now that has been incredibly successful, I'm incredibly proud of those folks from Chartwell's Food Service, who currently are providing both breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday. They are up to three hundred fifty meals per day, three hundred fifty breakfasts and lunches that are servicing those within our communities that truly need this at this time. And I just want to thank them for all of their service in regard to this program. And hopefully, we're going to be able to continue this throughout the social distancing period. Also want to thank all of the staff and administrative staff, students, the teachers and support staff for all their efforts in putting together our remote learning plan. We are week two of our official remote learning plan. I can't say enough about the work that Mr. Powers and Mrs. Richards and Mr. Jovolos have all done in putting this together, and all the hard work of our principals, and of course, our teachers right now for putting together this remote learning plan that for the last two weeks, we have been putting up on Unified Classroom and Google Classroom this week. We're actually able to introduce our Remote Learning Resource tab on our on our website, which now puts all of the K-8 assignments there for one-stop shop for parents. I would still encourage parents to continue to go on to Unified Classroom and Google Classroom and Dojo, because there might be some more specific information on there from their child's teacher in regards to virtual meetings and whatnot throughout the course of this remote learning period. So a lot of hard work has gone into this plan, and it will continue on until we receive word from the state whether we are going to return on May 4th, or if we have to continue forward with this program. But I just want to let folks know that even though we may not be in a traditional academic setting, everyone continues to work very hard here in VR, and I truly am appreciative of all this service.
All right, thank you very much. Did anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Swenson? And again, we'll do that through a roll call. Judy? Judy, can you hear us?
Is she using the same one you had yesterday?
We'll do a quick, I'll do a quick roll call till Judy comes back on. Mr. Gelfi, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Dolan?
No questions.
Mrs. Holbrook?
No questions.
Mrs. King?
No question.
Mr. Hammond?
No questions.
Mr. Florence?
No questions.
And Mr. Marrera?
No questions.
All right, and I have no questions. I think that's all of us. So thank you very much, Mr. Swenson, and for everyone for all their hard work. We're going to move on to the agenda to our educational report, which will be Mr. Powers and Mrs. Richards.
Thank you, Dr. Prewindowski, members of the School Committee. I just want to echo Mr. Swenson's comments about our remote learning plan. Ms. Richards and Mr. Jovolos and the rest of our administrative team were monumental in getting that up and running in a very quick turnaround. Just to kind of bring you up to speed on the timeline, we did receive guidance from the Commission around a Thursday. There was a follow-up conference call that Friday morning with him to kind of go into greater detail and explain what his expectations were for remote learning. From that point, Friday morning until really that following Monday, we spent the entire weekend crafting our plan. You know, we certainly based our plan off the Commissioner's guidance. As you, you know, probably already know, and you've looked through it, I'm sure, all of his recommendations, we really tried to incorporate into our plan. We didn't necessarily, you know, stray too much from it, because again, we wanted to really, you know, rely on the guidance that we had received from DESI. On that Monday, we had a chance to meet with our administrative team. We also met with our union leadership to review the remote learning plan. And then on Tuesday, we actually met with, I would say, we scheduled meetings with every teacher in the district virtually. I know many of them did attend. We certainly had a few that had conflicts that could not. But we certainly scheduled meetings with all of our staff on that Tuesday to review our remote learning plan, answer any questions that they may have. And then obviously, as you know, we provided a video tutorial to our families, our students, and our parents, explaining our remote learning plan that was released, I believe, on that Wednesday. And we were, we were up and running last week. We did complete our first week of remote learning. We are into week two, and so far, so good. You know, we really try to stress the term flexibility. That was key for us as an administrative team, but also a teaching, you know, teaching team, our faculty. But then again, at home with our parents, you know, everybody has to be flexible at this time. We have to be flexible in understanding what our family's limitations or challenges may be on their end. And obviously, we also understand that those are the same situations and limitations and challenges that our faculties, you know, faculties dealing with as well. So flexibility was, was kind of what this plan was based upon. And I think we've done a really good job. You know, we've kind of been monitoring what other districts have done. We feel as though that we put out a remote learning plan that still engages our students, still engages our families, our teachers. But really, it's based on those more around the social connections. We really wanted our faculty and staff to stay connected to our students and families. And that's really kind of what we built this plan upon, and then also providing educational opportunities as well. You know, we did, again, kind of structure our learning time around the Commissioner's guidance of roughly a half of a school day. So if you figure we're, you know, in school almost seven hours by the time you, we get there and get out, we did put out a recommended school day of three and a half to four hours. We did include some family service time in there as well. And again, those are averages. So I'm just even speaking from a, you know, a parent lens now. You know, my children engage on some days longer and some days shorter. And we put that out to parents and families as well to let them know that these are averages. So it may not be a full thirty minutes per class per day. It could be longer on some days, and it could be shorter on others. And I think our faculty and staff have done a really good job of balancing that and providing, again, opportunities for our students to engage, but also being very, very mindful of, you know, our, the challenges and limitations that our families are facing. So we are, we are in week two. You know, we will continue to, you know, provide assignments for our students and activities. And, you know, we've really been working with families. The feedback is, has been very, very positive. So we're pleased, you know, we obviously understand that there are, you know, we've received a few questions, and we've been very flexible with families and willing to work with them, because we do understand, you know, everybody's situation. And, you know, we'll continue to do so. You know, right now, we're still operating, assuming we're going to be back May 4th. So we, you know, we roughly have over a little, a little over two weeks of remote learning left. And certainly, if we get additional guidance from the Commissioner today or in the next couple of weeks, you know, we'll come up with an additional remote learning schedule or, you know, possibly look to, you know, revise, adapt, adjust our plan. And again, that's, you know, what we said in the very beginning, this is a living document. And, you know, it's built on flexibility, as I've stressed. And, you know, we'll, we'll make those changes as, as time moves on.
All right, very good. Mrs. Richards, did you have anything to add?
I'd just like to add that I am continually blown away by the, the staff in VR. The teachers really, once this plan was enacted, they jumped at the opportunity to get learning up and running again. And after we introduced the plan, I was able to put together a Google Classroom training for any teachers who wanted to kind of learn more about using Google. And over two hundred teachers voluntarily participated in this classroom training and showed enormous desire for professional growth. I've had a lot of meetings, virtual meetings and conversations with teachers who are spending their days like trying to learn how to be the most effective teacher they can possibly be, even in these difficult circumstances. So I just want to reiterate how impressed I've been with the, with all of the teachers that I've been working with.
All right, very good. Thank you all for your reporting, for all your hard work. Mr. Swenson, did you have any comments?
Just again, to echo what I stated during correspondence, thank you to Mrs. Richards and Mr. Powers and Mr. Jovolos and all of our teachers. And again, all of our parents and students home who are going through this remote learning. As Mr. Powers said, you know, he sees it through a professional lens, but also as a parent as well, as do I. And I see the strain that it's putting on, unfortunately, my wife right now, because I am kind of working most of my days from the office here. And I know it's difficult, because she's balancing working from home and also trying to keep two students on task in terms of their remote learning. So we're very cognizant of the fact that, that this is, you know, a difficult time for educators, but also a difficult time for our parents and our students. And we appreciate efforts on both sides of the equation. And I know that we are going to continue to work together collectively as a team and a community to continue promoting this remote learning initiative as long as we need to. Hopefully, sooner rather than later, we'll be in a traditional academic setting. But if the remote learning plan needs to continue, I am confident in the abilities of our staff and our parents and students at home that we'll be successful moving forward. So thank you to all that are involved and, you know, continue to press on. And remember, we're all in this together and to, you know, realize that the administrative team and staff and, and teachers are all here to support our families each step of the way. So feel free to reach out. And we've already told, you know, our staff to try to be, you know, responsive to emails that come forth within twenty-four hours, to have office hours weekly. And our staff is continuously reaching out to us as an administrative team to support as well. So again, we're all in this thing together, and I'm confident that we're going to be, continue to be successful moving forward.
All right, good. If this will be the opportunity, if anyone has any questions for Mr. Powers, Mrs. Richards, or Mr. Swenson, and we'll do a roll call. Mr. Gelfi?
No questions.
Mr. Dolan?
No questions.
Mrs. Holbrook?
No questions.
Mrs. King?
Just one question, Mr. Powers. Have you received any feedback from the teachers? Have they been able to reach out to all their students? Is there any portion of students that we haven't received any contact via email or Google Classroom or some kind of Google Meet?
Sure, yes. We do have a, you know, a small number of students that teachers have not been able to reach out to initially. They are doing their due diligence, you know, they've followed up through Unified Classroom and Power School. And now they're in the process of working their, with their administration, coordinator, family, and student supports to do some outreach. We certainly don't want to just rely in need of the, you know, nor to our teachers. Just while we sent, you know, an initial email, and we never heard back, they really are, they're looking at it like we would be in a traditional brick and mortar situation. They are following up, they're using all contact information as much as they can to really, really try to connect with our students. But we do know, you know, we may, at the end of this, be in a situation where, you know, some of our students do not engage in remote learning. But our big thing is, you know, to really find out why. Because if it was a, you know, a lack of access or, you know, family constraint or limitation, we certainly don't want our students or families to be penalized for that. So, you know, right now, we're, we're doing everything we can to reach out and then really finding out why, if they are, you know, if they're not engaging, you know, what's, what's the reason behind that?
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Hammond?
No questions.
Mr. Florence?
No questions.
And Mr. Marrera?
No questions.
All right, very good. We are going to move on now, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on now to our report from the Business Office, Mrs. Macedo.
Yes, I believe in your packet, you had a copy of the budget report up and through March 31st, 2020. And I just wanted to point out just a few things. We've made all the transfers that needed to be made from accounts that may have been in deficit to, from accounts that had surplus. There are some in there, though, and they're in deficit because they have an encumbrance, which I believe may or may not come to fruition. So I don't want to transfer funds too prematurely, especially now where things have kind of stopped. And I'm assuming and hoping that we're going to be seeing some savings in a number of areas. And we have applied the Circuit Breaker Funds. We now have a balance in that Circuit Breaker account of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, if it's needed. I'm hoping that, you know, we may have, see some reductions in some of the areas that we currently have encumbered for out-of-district tuitions and collaboratives. I just want to point out, in this budget, we have some areas where we should be anticipating reductions, obviously, because school is not in session. We haven't been having to pay substitutes by this warrant. We've caught everybody up, so we won't be seeing any more substitute payments over time for rental situations, transportation, regardless of outcomes of that contract. We will see some savings there. Extracurricular and sports, our electricity and heating, and again, maybe some of the out-of-district placements. I did know, though, that we had to make a correction to the Charter and Choice School encumbrance, which is not reflected in your report. That, those two accounts should zero out. Some of the things to keep in mind with any of these funds that we are not going to be spending due to COVID, we want to make sure that as we're continuing, we're continually paying salaries and allowances. So those accounts are very active. And we are going to need at year-end to pre-purchase about five hundred thousand dollars of out-of-district tuition. That was part of the plan for our FY21 budget. So we've made those reductions in the 21 budget with the understanding that we would pre-purchase that at the end of this fiscal year. Also, we also have to keep in mind, some of our revolving accounts may have shortages, because obviously, certain activities have not been able to occur. And especially in the areas of student activities, things like the drama, enrichment, prom, and rentals, the athletics. So we may be seeing in some of those revolving funds some areas that need to be covered, which would then have to come from our budget. So we want to make sure that we're not hoping that we have funds to spend more for next year, that we first have to take care of these things first before we can look at how else can whatever we end up with a bottom line be used for next year. Having said that, we have been listening to a lot of the revenue projections. What was on with the Ways and Means Roundtable today. And while we have a good rainy day fund with the state, they're very concerned about lost revenues. And that concerns me about even the revenues for this fiscal year. So we want to make sure that we do hold off on spending. We may need to make some cuts. And certainly, we don't know how much, how much that's going to affect our FY21 budget and what we may need to be doing there. So I just wanted to bring those pieces up for you. And that's my budget report for this month. If you have any questions?
All right, thank you very much. And we'll do the questions. And just to remind people, this is our current budget FY20 that we're talking about, okay? Any questions, Mr. Gelfi?
No.
Mr. Dolan?
Sorry, no questions.
Mrs. Holbrook?
No questions.
Mrs. King?
No questions.
Mr. Hammond?
No questions.
Mr. Florence?
No questions.
And Mr. Marrera?
No questions.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and moving on, we're going to have our Budget Subcommittee Report, Mr. Gelfi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The meeting of the Budget Subcommittee was held at noon on April 13th, 2020 via remote participation. Present for the meeting was myself, Dr. Prewindowski, Mr. Dolan, Mrs. Holbrook, Mr. Swenson, Ms. Macedo, and Mr. Conley. Mrs. McDougall took the minutes. And two community members joined the meeting using the Zoom meeting link. Neither community member chose to speak during the public comment. Several topics were discussed, including an, an update on the financial health of the FY20 budget and potential changes in state funding for the FY21 budget. Director of Business Services, Ms. Macedo, brought concerns regarding the budgetary impact of the COVID-19 outbreak to our attention. And discussions will continue as a situation evolves and more information is gathered from state and local officials. Mr. Swenson provided input on the many meetings he and Ms. Macedo have attended via remote participation with the Department of Ed, Superintendent Meetings, Masbo Meetings, and Attorney Michael Long. An amendment on the debt vote of March 25th, 2020 was required, and Mr. Conley presented the new figures and explained the reason behind the change. The Budget Subcommittee Committee unanimously voted in favor of the change, so in the form of a motion. The Budget Subcommittee recommends that, subject to review and verification by the District Treasurer, the School Committee vote the final budget for FY21 debt costs as follows. Rainham's cost with bond interest and principal of one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred ten dollars to be reduced by state reimbursement and grant distributions in the amount of zero for a total due from Rainham of one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred ten dollars. Bridgewater's cost with bond interest and principal of one million, seven hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred seven dollars to be reduced by the state reimbursement and grant distributions in the amount of zero for a total due from Bridgewater with bond interest and principal of one million, seven hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred seven dollars.
Motion by Mr. Gelfi. Can I have a second by Mr. Dolan? And before we do a roll call vote, Mr. Swenson, did you have anything to add?
I just wanted to inform the full committee that after Mr. Conley's recalculation of student population, that amount to Bridgewater did increase by two thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. I just wanted to bring that again, and that was based upon student population numbers. So it was a slight increase to the town of Bridgewater that we just wanted to bring to your attention in a decrease to the town of Rainham.
Very good. So motion has been made and seconded through a roll call vote. Mr. Gelfi?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. Florence?
Aye.
Mr. Marrera?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you. All right, and did anyone have any questions for Mr. Gelfi on the budget report? We'll do this quick. Mr. Gelfi?
No, I have no questions myself.
Mr. Dolan?
No questions.
Mrs. Holbrook?
No questions.
Mrs. King?
No questions.
Mr. Hammond?
No questions.
Mr. Florence?
No questions.
And Mr. Marrera?
No questions.
All right, very good, thank you. And now we're going to move on to our report from our Director of Facilities, Mr. Pachico.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Facilities Team remains vigilant in our approach to minimizing the closure of COVID-19 in our buildings and our people. Buildings were thoroughly disinfected at school closure and have been, sometimes, allowing access to teachers and different things in support of the distance learning and grab-and-go lunches as well. Just to highlight on a few points, we've enacted building access protocols that will further continue to have our buildings disinfected and limit exposure from staff. This includes peer-approved high school fitness staff that access daily for the grab-and-go lunch. All of the volunteering staff remain outside and follow social distance guidance. Central office staff access in order to support critical business operations of payroll, distance learning, and superintendent's office. That, in addition to all other buildings being closed and access is on a emergency-only request, which is communicated through the superintendent and cleared with facilities, so that we can disinfect those areas once folk part the building. So that's kind of the, the approach we've been having thus far. We do maintain a limited staff right now that we're patient to a critical business operation, gate check, building checks, bowing the grass, making sure the school districts' access are protected. So that's the protocol in place. Just to highlight a few cost-saving measures, what we did was we, all supply orders that were not previously approved will only be placed in a critical need or an antiquated status, meaning anything else is just on hold for now. So we reduce that need. All district boilers have been shut down so that we can recognize some energy savings on that end. Lighting schedules have been dialed way back. Hopefully, we'll keep the buildings on an occupied status from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We filed that back to 4:00 PM, and with most areas remaining on an emergency lighting basis only, so that we can further recognize some savings. All rubbish and recycling collection has been placed on call, and therefore, another cost-saving measure. And sub custodians, there's, there's no need at all, so we're saving there as well. So that kind of concludes the Facilities Report.
All right, thank you very much. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Pachico? I know that was a little bit difficult. I know that was a little bit difficult to hear. Mr. Swenson, did you have any quick comments before we open up to the others?
Just thank you, Mr. Pacheco and the custodial staff. I know it was difficult to hear a few of his points. Just that we've tried to, as best we can, shut down services right now that would be a cost savings to the district. I know heat right now has been shut down throughout, throughout the district. We have continued to keep on a custodial on a rotation basis staff to, again, continue to do checks throughout our building. We will continue to do our cleanings of buildings on an added need basis. For instance, last week, two weeks ago, we had our teachers return to our buildings after we had already performed a deep clean. Right after that, on April 1st, following day, we did another deep clean of all of our buildings. We're hoping right now that we are limiting the access to these sites so that we don't have to continue to do these deep cleans. Not because we don't want to do it from a manpower situation, but it is a situation right now. Some of our sanitation equipment and supplies are kind of, kind of becoming almost decimated right now. And it's difficult for Mr. Pacheco to get that replenished in a timely fashion because a lot of districts are in the same situation that we are currently in. So a lot of the things that Mr. Pacheco and I have talked about, you know, are concerning in terms of, you know, supplies and them being difficult to timely get our hands on. But Mr. Pacheco has been very proactive in reaching out to our supply vendors to get that, to get those goods in. So hopefully, when we get more information in regards to a May 4th return, we'll be able to have enough of those supplies to, again, continue to keep our buildings healthy and safe for our staff and students. But thank you, Mr. Pacheco, for all your work and what you've done.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Gelphy? Mr. Dolan?
No questions.
No questions.
Mrs. King?
No questions.
Mr. Hammond?
No questions.
Mr. Florence?
No questions.
And Mr. Mariero?
I have one. Do we foresee any issues with firing anything back up that we have put down to a low idle or an off position?
No, all the heating boilers that have been turned on usually get burned down or shut down at a certain time of year. It happens we can do it earlier, but it's a normal process and we shouldn't have any issues. We have kept the metric hot water boilers running just in case, you know, for cleaning purposes and things like that. But once it gets to a certain point, they pretty much maintain significant energy savings there. But there is no risk for any of our equipment by shutting them down earlier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to new business. And first up under that is the school calendar. And I go, oh, Mr. Powers, you're still here. Okay. Mr. Powers, did you want to go over the school calendar and the new vote we'll be taking? Can you hear me?
I can. Sorry, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you. I do apologize, I was about to join the commissioners' conference call, but I can kind of give a quick overview and then certainly if I run out of time, I'm sure Mr. Swenson can, can take over. So we did receive some guidance from the commissioner that we do have the option of continuing our remote learning through what would be April vacation. And if we were to do that, we would be able to count those four days. And I say four because the commissioner is still recommending that school districts observe the Monday holiday. So it would just be a case of four days of remote learning during what would be our April vacation next week. And that would allow us to take off four days at the end of the school year, which would put us out on the 17th if we did that. As you know, we had the one snow day earlier in the year. We originally scheduled to get out the 16th. The snow day bumped us to the 17th. And then obviously, we had to work up into, up until 185th day. However, with this new guidance, we're able to actually subtract those four days from the 185 total, and we would only have to go to June 17th. You know, a couple of reasons why we're, we certainly want to explore this and run this by you. We just feel, given the uncertainty of the situation, even if we do return on May 4th, which, you know, we have no reason at this point to believe we, we won't, although we have a call in a few minutes with the commissioner, you know, we just feel as though any opportunity that we can to not have to extend the current situation, i- if we're not able to return, would certainly be in our best interest. And I, and I do feel as though we really just got our remote learning up and running and for consistency's sake, we just feel it would, it would kind of be a, you know, to hit pause at this point and take another week off just would be counterproductive to our students and our staff. So we really, you know, would like to explore and have you consider continuing our remote learning through next week, again, observing the Monday holiday. But we would continue remote learning Tuesday through Friday. We do realize, you know, I am not sure if we have any situations where families will still be traveling. I don't really know where, you know, anybody would potentially go, but if, you know, they maybe had plans to go to a second home or somewhere, we're certainly understanding of that and flexible, again, flexibility is the key here. So we're certainly willing to work with, with families if for some reason they still, still continue to travel or engage in something other than remote learning next week. But it is our recommendation, just so that we can take those days off at the end of the year, that we continue with remote learning through traditionally, which would be next week. So it would just be Tuesday through Friday. We would still observe the holiday on Monday, and that would get us out on June 17th.
All right. Very good. Mr. Swenson, that's your recommendation as well?
It does come with my recommendation, Madam Chair. And again, to Mr. Powers' point, it is about, you know, should this remote learning plan continue? We realize the, the obstacles and strains it may cause on our families. So if we do continue the rest of the year out, it would probably behoove us to end this school year a little bit earlier to assist parents in that respect. But I'm also concerned about that momentum break now that we're in our official second week of remote learning. To go back next week and kind of have that lull and try to kind of kickstart that back up in two weeks, maybe a difficult situation for students and families. So it does come with my recommendation to work through with the observation, obviously, of Patriots' Day on the Monday, but the work through Tuesday, April 21st through Friday, April 24th, with an end date now to be June 17th of 2020 for this academic school year.
And that was with the cooperation of the union leadership as well?
Correct. We have reached out to BREA, and they were in, they did want to explore this as well. So we wanted to make sure that they were okay with it first before even bringing it to your attention as the full committee.
All right. So what we're going to do first is let me read to amend the school calendar by foregoing April vacation to continue remote learning from Tuesday, April 21st through Friday, April 24th, and to change the last day of school from June 23rd to June 17th. And a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Gelphy. And before we take the vote, I'm just going to go quick if there's any questions. Mr. Gelphy?
No questions.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, just one. The 17th would be, still be a half a day, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Not a question, but just a comment. I think it's really important to keep that momentum, as Mr. Powers and Mr. Swenson said, with the online learning, which in many cases really just began in earnest a little over a week ago. So it's important for those students to maintain the connections that they have with their teachers and classmates in an organized fashion, especially as an expected surge in the COVID-19 cases in the coming weeks could induce more anxiety. So I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Mrs. King?
No questions.
Mr. Hammond?
No questions.
Mr. Florence?
Is this a practice that the other surrounding districts are also kind of going with as well?
Yeah. Been on the list, sir, for the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. A lot of folks are exploring this option. I know last night, New Bedford Public Schools voted to work through April vacation. I know some of the surrounding communities are East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, I believe Easton. I believe Taunton was going to take a vote to work through this as well, as well as Somerset Berkeley. Those are some of the area superintendents that I've been in contact with that have kind of been exploring this option.
Thank you.
Mr. Mariero?
I have one question. Now that we have been granted the authority for remote learning, with taking away April vacation, which I am in for of to get out a little bit earlier, is there a possibility that additional time could get added on to the June 17th date? Or would that be the date that we would be getting out on a half a day?
That would be the date. That would be the date. That's, that's through the guidance of the commissioner and the Department of Elementary Education that regardless of the duration of the social distancing period, we were going to have to make up four days, whether it has been four days or four months. And now with the guidance being that if we were to work through April vacation, we were able to eliminate those four days at the end of the school year. So that's the guidance that we've been provided by the commissioner as of last week. So that's why we're bringing this recommendation forward to the full committee today.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So now we, we have a motion that's been made and seconded, and now we'll do the roll call vote. Mr. Gelphy?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
Mr. Florence?
Aye.
And Mr. Mariero?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Swenson, how are you going to send this out so the families will know that we'll be doing this?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm, after we leave this meeting, we adjourn. I am going to join the commissioners' call for a little bit, and then soon after that, I'll put information out to families and staff via our instant alert system. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our payroll warrants. And we'll do payroll warrants dated March 26, 2020, and April 9, 2020. Motion by Mr. Gelphy, second by Mrs. Holbrook.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself.
And Mr. Dolan's going to recuse himself, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gelphy?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond? Mr. Florence?
Aye.
And Mr. Mariero?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. And next up, we have our general ledger warrants dated March 26, 2020, and April 9, 2020. Motion by Mr. Gelphy, second by Mrs. Holbrook. Roll call vote. Mr. Gelphy?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond? Mr. Florence?
Aye.
And Mr. Mariero?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Very good. Next up, we're going to move to our public comment. And I do see some new faces on the screen. And I just want to remind those that are not regular members, participants in our school committee meetings, that public comment is typically limited to three or four minutes. And we will not be responding to any of the concerns that are brought forth today. We will take them all under advisement. And that is our typical procedure when we have a public comment at our regular meetings. So Judy, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, I can hear you.
So we're going to open up public comment, and are you going to let us know who's speaking?
Can you hear me, Susan?
I, I can.
Okay. So yes, I have several people up on the screen. And some people, I can actually see them. If I can see you, if you could raise your hand that you would like to speak, I'll call up your name before you're entered into the session. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for public comment? Okay. I have, and forgive me if I, if I butcher your name, but I'm doing my best. Cleone Mendo?
You did perfect.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. And, okay. And the school committee can hear you.
Hello, everybody. This is my first time, so I'm a newbie. I actually, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, super. I did send a question in advance via email, so I just wanted, my comment is if you received it. It's around diversity and inclusion.
I have not had a chance to check, this is Susan, the chair. I have not had a chance this morning to check my emails. I plan to do that as soon as we disconnect from this meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I would be just looking to a response to that email. That's my comment for today.
Okay. I will be, I will happily respond. Just give me a little bit of time this afternoon, and I'll reach out to you.
Sure. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Judy?
Um, oh. Wendy LaCivita?
Wendy, did you want to speak?
Okay. And I believe that she did not.
I have Linda. Is there a Linda out there that wants to speak to us?
And I do see a Linda. Linda, did you, would you like to speak during public comment?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else.
I don't see anyone else. Quite a few people left prior to public comment. So I don't see anyone else that would like to speak.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to announcements and items to be considered for future agenda. I just have one quick announcement. I did speak with the Rainham Town clerk this morning, and she reassured me that any school committee member, Kevin and Phil, that are up for reelection, you are full-fledged member right up until the elections of June 27th. So she did confirm that your term will go right up until that June 27th date. Our next budget subcommittee meeting, if we stick to our current schedule, will be May 12th for budget and school committee, May 20th. And certainly, check your emails because we may need to change those if we need to make decisions sooner. And with that, did anyone else have any announcements? Mr. Gelphy?
No.
Mr. Dolan?
Oh, thank you.
Mrs. Holbrook? I can't find her anywhere. Mrs. Holbrook?
You know, I'm all set. Thanks.
Mrs. King?
All set.
Mr. Hammond?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Mr. Florence?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Mariero?
All set. Thank you.
Very good. So motion to adjourn at 1:10. Motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Gelphy. Roll call, Mr. Gelphy?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mrs. Macedo, I'm sorry. Mr. Mariero?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Aye.
And Mr. Florence?
Aye.
Did I get you, Mrs. Holbrook? Will, did I get you? Oh, I can't see you. All right.
It looks like she was frozen.
Yeah. Her video froze.
That's all right. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, very much for participating, and we'll be in touch. Pray safe, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Be well.